Let us pray. Lord, we thank you today for our fair city, Ashland, Kentucky. And we ask, Lord, that you do for divine wisdom and guidance on this board of mayor commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its people. Bless those in attendance today who labor among us. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and most of all, our citizens and those in in attendance and in our viewing audience. Bless our meeting now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Stand and salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to receive and file the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to receive and file the minutes for the regular meeting held on June 10th, 2021? Recess meeting held on June 11th, 2021? The regular meeting held on June 24th, 2021? The recess meeting held on June 25th, 2021? And the recess meeting held on June 28th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearings and reports, commissioners?
Oh, okay. I get to go first, huh? Well, first of all, I wanted to tell everybody I went to the music. If you didn't go hear the music down at the bandstand at Central Park the last, the first Friday of the month, it was terrific. And they had a lot of patriotic music, which everybody loved. And it was, it made everybody feel so enthusiastic. I loved it. And our mayor, we found out, is a conductor. So who knew that he had musical abilities and he was on the beat? And I even made a video.
Thank you for documenting that.
I was going to show it today for everybody's edification because if you need a conductor, he's, he's got it going on. And First Friday was so successful, went down there and I went over to the mill to eat and they'd sold out of about everything. So it was wonderful to see First Friday crammed up with all kinds of people from all over the place and having a good time. And our next First Friday will be August 6th, I believe, Holly, isn't that right? Yes. So our Ashland Emotion director is here. So good job, I mean, on every aspect. So we appreciate it and we look forward to another great First Friday. Also wanted to say congratulations to our Boyd County, the Boyd County Fiscal Court for the great job they're doing and we wish them all the best for the new additions they're planning out there. That's very exciting for all of us. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner, I've got nothing.
Did I use your?
Took the thunder.
See, that's why I like to go first.
But no, I welcome everybody to our new meeting. I just want to say, I want to congratulate those in our audience, Visit A K Y and, and Ashland Emotion, Destination Ashland, who we're going to hear from. They've all done a great job in boosting our city and I really appreciate it. I appreciated the television station, also. I'll always go back to my town about how, what a great feature and what a great addition they are to our city. And I just want to welcome you to our new meeting. That's all I have.
All right. I just want to say thanks to everybody that came to our event, the Highlands Star Tours. It was the first event, but we ended up having a whole, 100 total people and 70, about 70 kids. And so it was a little overwhelming at times, but it was, it was awesome. And it was, it was, I appreciate tourism helping with that. Appreciate everybody that, that helped because it's not easy to, to get through an event like that with, with that many kids. But it was good and it was, it was great to see something like that and, and, but there's, there's literally always something happening in downtown now. So it's, it was good to, to be a part of that and give, give kids a little something to do on a, on a Friday night. I know we're going to hear from Destination Ashland today, so I won't speak much about them. But when we mentioned Dr. Jevanen, obviously, last, our last meeting. Destination Ashland, for me, has been really a blessing, not just in the fact of what we've done and what we've accomplished in that, that group, but also that's how I met Dr. Jevanen. And he, you know, the, the things I learned and my relationship with him, obviously not short, because that's, I met him literally at our first meeting, so. But my takeaways and everything that I got to absorb in a short time from him happened mostly in meetings either there or when I would see him at his building or at the park. And so this, this group holds a special place to me, not just because of what we've, what we've done and what we're going to see from the group, but, but also because that's where I was able to meet him. So I know they'll talk about that a little bit as well. So I just wanted to, to mention that and, and yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I too want to echo the congratulations to our county. They, this project that they've announced is quite significant and it's not just significant for that local government. It's significant for every government inside the county, including Ashland. And I was able to attend with the mayor of Catlicksburg. We even drove out together so that we could be there and show our support. We do work together. I think there's common, common knowledge now that we are actively working together in government. And I think it's important that we continue to strengthen those bonds because we are stronger together. And I think some of the momentum we've seen lately has proven that. On a side note, a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Pullen and I were able to reach out to the Woodlands Foundation. And they are a charitable organization that was set up through the Ashland Oil Company before they changed to ultimately Marathon. And their goal is to really further economic development in our community. So Mr. Pullen and I, we, on behalf of the commission, talked about our Civic Center project and talked to them about how important it is to our downtown. And good news, the Woodlands commissioners, they have given us the second largest gift in their history, which is $750,000. And that will be used towards the, the building of this project. It's quite significant and symbolic to me also that the site of this development was also Ashland Oil property. So how symbolic that the foundation that was charged with helping further economic development in our city, rising from the ashes of the old Ashland Oil building, will be our structure to further development downtown. So it's really exciting and I'm so appreciative of the Woodlands Foundation. They have funded so many projects, not just in our city limits, but around, including the project out for the county. They care about our community. They want us to thrive. They want us to do good and they want our community to continue to get better. And I can't thank them enough. That's all I have.
Let's give a hand to the Woodlands Foundation. We appreciate that.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll go ahead and start off. Carrie from Destination Ashland's got a presentation prepared today and then I'll have a couple of short comments at the completion of the presentation.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
My name is Carrie Tag. I serve as the representative from King's Daughters on the Destination Ashland team. Thank you for allowing me to provide an update of our progress to the board today. Before I begin, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the recent loss of one of our most valuable team members, Dr. E B Jevanen. Dr. Jevanen was a positive force and an active participant in every Destination Ashland meeting and project. His presence and guidance are greatly missed. May all that we do moving forward honor his memory and vision for the community that he served and loved. Exactly one year ago today, I stood in this room and asked the board's support as we continue to follow the work plan created for us by tourism and downtown expert Roger Brooks. The board graciously agreed to our plan to create new branding and to name the district in downtown, and that is the area from 13th to 18th Streets along Winchester, including Carter to Greenup Avenue. Since that time, much has happened. We have, we safely continued to meet and work during the pandemic. Broadway Square was opened. We hired, the new tourism director, Brandy Clark, was hired and she's done a fantastic job. We also have a new director at AIM, Holly Stone, who is getting up to speed very quickly. And we received a $25,000 grant from Kentucky Power. And I'll talk a little bit about what we spent that money on in just a few moments. We also finalized the branding, graphic designs, and messaging. And here's an example of that, the new brand. You'll see it is a fresh rollout. It is bright, colorful, and creative. To support that, Michelle Grubb completed a brand style guide for us. And this is key because it identifies, defines, and helps communicate our vision to the, so that we ensure that the messaging of Ashland is clear and consistent. Brandy and her team created a new brochure for Visit Ashland. And this was a very important step in Roger Brooks' work plan to design and print this very best of Ashland brochure for tourism. This goes through the Kentucky Department of Tourism as well. They lead this program. It's displayed at all the Kentucky Welcome Centers. And then, of course, what we mail out through the, or Brandy does, through the Visit Ashland, it sees an average of 300 per month that go out into, not, across the state, not just I think if you are on the web or on social media at all, you will definitely have seen that we have a new online presence and that is quite significant. That was another key step, was to have this focused, consumer-facing website and social media campaign. This has been very effective through the tourism office. And then the city is also under a refresh for their website. So we get almost a million impressions in June. That is amazing for anybody who works in business development and sees how impactful that social media presence is. There's also the community calendar that is online and the hashtags that are being used across social media. And so this is an interactive part of the presentation. If you have a smartphone with you, you can take it out now and point it at the screen and that QR code will load up where the community calendar can be accessed. So you'll always be in the know about what is happening across our area. This is not just in Ashland, but also any place around here that submits their events to be on the community calendar. And Brandy does a great job managing that. So one of the things that Roger Brooks told us when he was giving us our training was that you will be far more effective as one loud voice as opposed to numerous small voices. And this was a graphic that we refer to often in our Destination Ashland meetings. As you can see, the wagon's not going to go very far if those horses are pulling in all different directions. So creating this branding and this theme of creativity has put us on the path to be pulling in the same direction. And many of these organizations that we work with throughout the city and that Brandy and Holly reach out to with Ashland Emotion and Visit Ashland and just so many activities that you're, you're seeing happening across, in all the new spaces that we have. We've used the money from the grant to buy many things, the spun chairs, the outdoor games that you see. I see people interacting with those all the time downtown. The string lights in our alley. Dr. Jevanen was a key proponent of this string light, string light project. And I think it's just a testament to what a light he was for us in this group, too. Recently, the pole banners have come in and they're marking the district. So the grant helped pay for that. And just in the programming, one of the things that Mr. Brooks told us is that we needed at least 240 activities happening in and around the city every year. And I know you've seen a lot of these already. It's really amazing to me that since May of 2021, we've had 110 activities and the games are out daily. And there's another 28 activities that are planned through November so far. And they get added to all the time. And thank you, Commissioner Blanton, for making the Stars, Star Tours, one of those. I just think that is so fantastic. I didn't get to come to this one, but the next one, I will be there in full geek mode. Love the moon. Okay, so you guys have probably seen this, the, the branding with the create with us. And we landed on that after that survey that we did, where it just kept coming up again as a reoccurring theme of how creative and how wonderful the people are in this area. And it came about that we could brand with this and it would be an easy transition across a lot of entertainment, whether that's dining or even, you know, I'm in healthcare, you can get healthy with us. You know, just about anybody can use this somehow to help promote their business and activity. So we are now at the point in Mr. Brooks' plan where all the horses are pulling the wagon in the same direction and we are ready to hand these reins over to these great organizations and these leaders to just continue to build on this, create with us theme and branding and making Ashland a destination for people to live, work, and play. Does anyone have any questions?
Very nice, very nice. I, I for one, love everything you've done. I appreciate the alley. I think it's fabulous. I can see us having more of those with themes in them and it'll be great. I'd also be remiss after seeing what a great job Holly Stone is doing with, with AIM. Brandy Clark and her staff are such a tremendous asset and the things they're doing for Ashland and the area, it's just phenomenal. And just, I can't say how glad I am. You guys are in over there and it just looks like a whole different block over there. You made such a difference and you're working really hard. I for one, you've touched my heart with all this. I love Ashland so much and to see the ideas and things you're doing, it's just great. So thank you, thank you so much for your dedication, all of you. You did a great job.
Carrie, thank you. You know, a lot of times when we talk about change, it's, a lot of people have great ideas, but when you ask them to actually get involved to help, they're never to be found. And you're one of the people that always steps up and so we are so appreciative of your leadership. And I, I know there's others in that, that group specifically and you all, you all really knocked it out of the park and we can't thank you all enough. And I do want to mention an unsung hero in our own city staff that I know has been a key to this and it's Michelle Grubb. Michelle, thank you for your work.
She's amazing.
Could I say one more thing?
Sure, go ahead.
I served with Carrie on the AIM board for a lot of years and, and her leadership is invaluable and she's always on spot. And you're right, she's always there when you need something done. And I can tell you how much I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. I played a very small part in this, but I was very honored to be selected, to be a part of it and to echo what Mr. Commissioner Blanton said. If, just the time that I got to spend with getting to know E B, I mean, it was, it was life-changing for me. He was definitely touched all of us. I think we all knew him, but we didn't know him as well until we spent this time with him. And to see him as a physician during a pandemic gives so much of his time and talents and just whatever we needed. My life is better for this experience and I just thank you guys for that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
I just appreciate all your efforts. I walked into the visitors bureau and I was at my wits end. I couldn't find a food truck anywhere. I couldn't find any music and I was having Food Truck Friday with nothing.
Two days before.
Two days before. And they, 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 all of a sudden, the music came, walked through the front door and we found a food truck and it came off the ground. And that's, I enjoy y'all working together and it looks so nice down there, the whole remodeling and, and I just appreciate y'all. And, and Ashland Emotion, First Friday is, I hear that from everybody about how successful that is. Even the first one that, that came off the ground, it was supposed to be kind of a low-key thing. Well, it wasn't. It was, it was full-blown. And so I just appreciate all your efforts. Destination Ashland, E B Jevanen was my good friend and I miss him, I'm still missing him. And he, he left a legacy in this town that, and a role model to go after because he gave so much. I appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, one, sorry. One second, I promise. The thing for me going into something like this was, okay, you know, the general ideas of, of some of the slides that we saw, that's great, but if, if you don't have a structured plan that you're holding people to, and we had, I mean, there were people that, that signed off from the group because they just didn't have the time to meet every couple of weeks like we were doing. And those last couple of meetings that we had, I think, kind of brought us full circle and we went through that. I forget now how many points we had in the plan, six, like 60 points in the plan that we went through literally every one of them. And we saw where we were and we were like, okay. And then we were good. So it was like, you know, at work, we always have, you know, targeted action item lists, you have due dates and things like that. And that's what this group was. So that's, it was a little bit different than other, you know, it wasn't award and other initiatives that I've seen in the city. It was totally different kind of thing. So excellent job by everybody that was involved to stick with it through a pandemic and, and get it done. So thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Carrie, before you go, if I could, Mayor, just a couple of comments. Mayor and Commissioner Blanton have both alluded to this. A lot of, sometimes there's talk and no action and in my terms, there's always got to be champion or champions to do it. And I think what you saw with the Destination Ashland team is a group of champions, a core group of people that, again, volunteered. Commissioner said that on average, you know, the group had to work their way through COVID, what that impact looked like, but the, the ball was always rolling downfield and met on average every two weeks. That, it doesn't sound like much, but trying to find that time was a really big deal. So everybody that volunteered their time. Something like the community calendar, I hope that we soon all take that for granted. Something I've heard since I've been in here is, well, you know, there's one group of people say there's nothing to do. And then if you live in this community, I was shocked coming from DC, I thought I was going to be bored. The social calendar here, if you want to do things, I mean, it is packed and that one-stop shopping for that, Brandy, Holly, Michelle, and everybody else who did work on that, that's just an amazing product. And it's someplace everybody can go to and, and know right away and how it's categorized, again, very, very well done. Couple of months ago, I was sitting at Mills Cafe and having, having lunch with somebody and a really well-meaning citizen came up and said, you know, I just feel like we wasted money on Broadway Square because there's no activities there. I mean, we were literally still wearing masks. I said, are you? I said, have you forgotten about this? And the individual said, oh, I totally forgot. But then you look at the statistics that Carrie just pointed out, you guys shot out like a rocket on these activities. And so that is just amazing. I mean, we've gone from zero to 60 in the blink of an eye, and again, it's to all the people that have, the people that we've talked about and a lot of people that we haven't mentioned, but phenomenal job. And then the last thing is, you know, the future is only going to be brighter when you, we talk about the activities, a key component of Rogers' plan, but also the walkability of downtown, as the mayor and commissioners and everybody in this room, I think, knows, you know, the potential for $3 million in restructuring on the road downtown to make that walkable, again, right in line with Roger Brooks' plan. And what the city is investing in through smart planning in the past that's allowed us to do the streetscape from in the district. I mean, it's all really coming together, a really perfect time. So I just, again, want to, just from the bottom of my heart, thank all of you that have led and worked the late hours on that. It is transforming an already great community into something that I don't think we can all potentially understand what this is going to look like, that our potential is phenomenal, and it starts with efforts like this. So thank you all very much.
All right, thanks, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie.
We... Two other quick comments.
What is it?
Two other quick comments. None, thank you, Mayor. I did, I want to point out the staff in the back of the room. The things that the staff is doing right now is blowing my mind. It's been exceedingly busy. Normally, we get done with the budget, and everybody kind of takes a deep breath, and that's not the July that I've experienced, or the staff. From your end closeout, that finance is doing, you'll see in this agenda, we're onboarding 13 employees. So you know what we suffered during COVID with the reduction in the workforce and all that. Well, now we're coming back to health and getting back that firepower, mayor and commissioners that we've all been lacking and desiring. Massive utility projects that you'll see on this agenda and future agendas. Also, a lot of changes in alcohol and the laws, what the city and the staff has been doing on that has been fantastic, and continuing economic development leads also. I did want to give the mayor and commissioners and the community a heads-up, in the next couple of meetings, we're going to have briefings on the rate study that's been done, that's been accomplished recently. The wastewater treatment plant, mayor and commissioners, they're coming in, they owe you an update on where we're at on that. And also, the ethics training is being coordinated, not just for the mayor and commissioners, also for the city staff and people that are on the various boards and commissions. So, Mayor, thank you.
I do want to add one more comment. If you've read the paper this week, we have at least eight properties that are scheduled to be demolished. Part of our commitment to this budget was to work on blight and the elimination of blight. So I'm pleased to see that our code enforcement department has pushed forward with this. We are very much in favor of getting these blighted properties leveled as soon as possible, and more on the agenda for the future. The city manager and I and Chief Kelly were actually driving through the community last week. We try to make a point every two weeks to ride out into the city, not just downtown, but all over the city, to look at things, and we have a lot of work to do. And we are doubling down on our commitment to seeing that specifically happen. The best thing we can do is remove blight, restore these properties to the tax rolls and to private investment, because I'm sure most of those properties are currently not seeing any taxes, not seeing any improvements, and this may spur others that are thinking twice about getting their property cleaned up to get their properties cleaned up. And it's going to raise property values, it's going to reduce crime, and like I said, it's going to spur private development. So I'm appreciative of the staff for that.
And to make sure, to the credit of my fellow commissioners who were passionate about this as well, we put money in the budget to make sure that we had the wherewithal to get this done. So we're really pleased that this is moving forward as quickly as possible.
How many properties potentially?
That list had about...
We're talking about Chris.
We have a pretty long list.
Yeah, we have a long list.
And I can send it to you, but I was just checking with Lorraine, I think we're up around 45 on that list. And we're going to work aggressively to get those down as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Our legal department leaned in to give us a lot of assistance.
That's right, yeah.
Thank you.
At this time, it's public participation for items not listed on the agenda. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Only one speaker is permitted per subject, and no action will be taken at this meeting. If you would like to leave additional comments with staff afterwards. You could just give us your name and your address, please.
First off, I'm Vicki Franklin.
Yes.
And I am hard of hearing. I see some of y'all, I hear some of y'all, but I don't get it all.
Gotcha.
I do see a lot of pride, and I see a lot of help with this community, and I would like to be a part of it. I take pride in my home on 26th Street, your property.
Yep.
Three doors up, Montgomery and 26th Street. There is a lot of drug activity, so bad that I put my house up for sale. I've worked three years on my house. I've built walls with the city's permission that is beautiful. My home looks beautiful. I have videos where they are feeding my service dog, legal service dog. I'm scared.
To your point, we actually, 26th Street, the city manager, the city manager and Chief Kelly and I drove onto 26th Street, the side street behind it, the side street and the backside. And what we did was, we made an assessment at that time last week that we were targeting these areas for our police to be active and more active. One of the troubling things I noticed even with my own property was we had squatters.
Yes, I was the one that called. And I know I take a chance maybe being shot, but everybody else in the community is afraid. I'm not scared. I have the Lord.
But I will tell you this, Chief Kelly actually pointed out the properties you mentioned to me and the city manager. So we are actively pursuing this, and I want you to know, you've been heard, and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't, like I said, I can't hear you all, but, and all the neighbors that are watching this, they're scared. Well, I'm scared, too. But I know I worked very hard to make it look beautiful in the hospital. When you come down the alley, you know, my house is beautiful because that ends at the hospital. So, you know, and I would like some way to get involved in this community. Because I can't hear, and I can't even hear the telephone.
Well, we want you to be a part, and you're reaching out to us about those properties is so important, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm through then, because I can't hear you all, but I do love all the pride.
Thank you.
Ms. Franklin, I wanted to mention one other thing to you, and that is that there are activities that go on with law enforcement that aren't necessarily seen.
Yes.
But to the mayor's point, that that has been identified, and there's both active and things that you don't see that are ongoing to try to improve that very real situation that you've described. But thank you, and also, I'd like to talk to you afterwards. We'll have an opportunity to possibly get you involved in some boards or commissions that are here in the city.
Thank you. So then I'll just wait around.
Please. Thank you.
I can't hear, I'm trying to read y'all's lips, but I'm old.
Thank you again for doing what you do for us, sir.
No problem. That's what AMVets are all about. I have good news. First of all, I got reelected. I didn't say this at the last meeting, but the last, our convention, I got reelected for a three-year term as convention corporation trustee. Also, I got a thing in the mail from VA, and to the people who are caretakers, veterans, you can go to the VA now and get your COVID shot for free. No questions asked, go in and get it done. And really, that's all I've got. We're not going due to COVID. We were supposed to go to National Convention in North Carolina. Reason being, we're all, they're going, we got a guy from Post 61 out of Louisville who's going to probably be our next national commander. He'll be the first national commander out of state of Kentucky, and he's a Navy veteran. Mike, I can't help it, so anyway, that's all I got to say.
Taffleweed. Thanks, appreciate you.
Hey, no problem.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay. At this point, we're going to move on to old business.
Old business, item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ash, Kentucky and National City Firefighters Local 706, International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO-CLC.
Some of...
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, reading and adoption of a resolution adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action recommended by the city manager on items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of July 22, 2021.
So moved.
Any discussion? Just kind of reading myself.
Were these items like the Mountain Enterprises and the Best Equipment Company, or wait a minute, the one in Chillicothe, Circleville, were those sent out for bid?
Yes.
Okay, so those were the lowest bidders?
I'm glad to see us getting back to the number of employees we need, especially when they're shorthanded in parks and streets and so forth. I'm happy for that, and also with the parks, the pickleball resurfacing, that's a crowded event over there every night, and we needed that. And I'm glad to see that the playground equipment is coming.
Commissioner, to your point, I have asked the city manager to present to the board at the next meeting an update on all the improvements that we'll be making to our park system.
Great, great. And by the way, could you tell the public how that excavating event went?
Well, we're on this, okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Can you?
Elaborate on that?
Yeah, elaborate on that.
Good news is, we don't have any Indian remains or any artifacts that were found. If you're a historian, that may be bad news, but to, as far as progress on our all-inclusive playground that was championed by our parks and department and finance, we are happy to say we are moving forward. And I think it's full speed ahead on that project specifically, but I think at the next meeting, we're going to have a lot of insight as to what we're going to be seeing there, as well as other amenities added to our different parks.
Commissioner, also, a little bit for the public to know that, in addition to what the mayor had said, also that set us up with a group of volunteers that came out and did that. So, you know, free chicken for them coming out and doing that and making sure that we're on good foundation. I think that effort that had a lot of hands from the staff involved in this has put us in a really good position with state to come up with a, I think they call it a phase one for an archaeological survey, which cost-wise is pretty reasonable, but it will allow us to have a lot more flexibility and not step on any landmines, if you will, as we continue to do other board commits to other improvements in the park. So it's going to continue, you'll see some other things on a broader perspective there at the park. And as the mayor mentioned, the Indian mounds, it's not just about the Indian mounds. When you talk to these archaeologists, you know, they talk about the benefit of what they could find from the racetrack in the early 1900s. So there's so much rich history there, and how that park has remained what it is is pretty amazing, so.
No old betting tickets from the racetrack, I guess.
No dead body.
I have another comment, please. The city manager noted earlier, this includes the hiring of 13 new employees. And my first question, what is the total salary, and then what is the total benefits for these 13?
We'll have to add that up. Each one of these is calculated on each one of the fiscal notes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I noticed they were in there individually, but do we know a total, do we know a total finance back there that this, what I'm concerned about is the sustainability of this 13 new hires when we're not really all the way out of this mess we were in the last year with them. And while it looks like we have a lot of money without the grants and things, I think our budget would have been pre-COVID. So I'm wondering, could any of these been done with seasonal workers at all?
Thanks for that question, Commissioner. So first off, all of these positions are authorized positions by our authorizations document. We were down approximately 30 employees as a result of either not hiring vacancies or reduction in force that we did temporary layoffs during the height of the COVID crisis. When we went through the budget this year, we did project that we could maintain 100% of our authorized positions, and that's what this is moving towards. There are still other areas that I think as a result of what we discovered during COVID, there's been some position constrictions. For one that you're voting on today, we took a superintendent and supervisor, combined that into one position that worked out well with the retirement. Also, if the public doesn't know this, in the interim, and I want to give a shout-out to finance on this, while it was a process that we've incorporated very well in the past, Jack and sanitation, when they hire a sanitation worker, they bring them on as a seasonal, because not everybody's cut out to be a sanitation worker. Some people think they are, and they can't cut the mustard. And so before we hire full-time, we do benefits and make that commitment, that's a process that's been used. That also went out to other sections, and the city have done that. Well, finance had identified that, hey, we can hire double the seasonal employees until we get to the new budget year, and what that enabled, for example, Jack had eight vacancies on street workers, or, excuse me, four. He hired eight seasonals that enabled him and other staff sections to say, let's try these folks on for size, and now they pick the cream of the crop to offer these positions to. So as opposed to somebody coming in, we do all the work, and Sean and his staff is working their tails off to get folks onboarded, we want to make sure that we've got a good investment with them. So hopefully I answered your question. We do have the funds for this. I think we were very conservative, as the mayor has pointed out before. Last year with some of the decisions we made, I think that was the right decision to go conservative, and I believe we're in a positive position.
So what you're saying then is these 13 new hires are to fill, they're not actually new, creating new positions?
We are not.
These were in employees before, okay.
These were authorized positions. Now, you will see on the new agenda...
Authorized positions or they were existing positions and they were gone because of COVID, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the city has approximately 308 authorized employees, and we were down to whatever the math is, 270, and these are authorized positions, and what I mean by that is they're budgeted for.
Okay, you understand me asking these questions because of budget concerns?
Absolutely, no, absolutely do.
All right.
But I want to be totally honest, too, there is a growth that was discussed during the budget process, a growth of four positions that you all will vote on today in the new business for the addition of two police officers and also the addition of two street workers. So it's separate from these 13, and those positions have not been filled. We don't intend to move on the parks positions until we make some other decisions as a city and as a board, but the police officers will try to move out on as quickly as possible.
I want the public to understand that when we hire somebody new, the biggest cost for, most times, the biggest cost is for benefits. This is not when we hire seasonal workers, we don't have that as part of our budget, but when we hire employees as a permanent basis, this is an ongoing expense. You know, we don't know, just coming out of this, where we're going to stand fiscally from how our businesses are doing. We don't have any idea yet, so it's difficult to commit to long-term expenditures when we don't really have a feeling for it. At least it is for me.
And Commissioner, I appreciate your comments. You know, one of our roles is not just to draft ordinances and approve, we have a fiscal responsibility to the taxpayer, and so your questions are always welcome in regards to long-term costs, and I appreciate you continuing to be a champion for those kinds of issues. I guess my only question moving forward is, and the city manager and I had actually discussed this previously, I too am a fan of seasonal work, if we can use it. I even recommended revisiting using labor potentially from the court system for folks that are looking to get back on their feet as a way, a cost-effective way to...
It's a good idea.
...get people back in a job and to try to build their self-worth. So we actually discussed that last week, and I think he was going to investigate that some further, but I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, to your point, what's a little bit different in this budget from, you know, where I come from is it's almost half in payroll. So that's a big difference between what I've seen before. So absolutely, and we had a conversation during the public work session that I thought was beneficial. We have extra money, we know that right now. And even, so where do we stand as far as what do we think our revenue is going to look like? That can be tough, obviously, right now.
Right.
It's a very tough thing. But take away the extra money, even the bond proceeds, and look at.
Air bones.
Yeah. What do we expect to come in?
That's right.
In revenue and taxes, fees. And so two, three, four years out from now, are we going to be able to sustain what we're doing? And so, you know, I think we're taking, we did a really good job of taking advantage of the money, and then now are we sustainable with what we have after? And, you know, I think it is, but no, these questions, I mean, that's what these meetings are about.
All right. Any other comments or questions about the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
New business, item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ash, Kentucky and Best Equipment Company, Inc. for the labor, materials, and equipment to fit camera truck with new equipment in the amount of $194,609.21 for the Department of Utility Operations Division wastewater collection.
Some of.
Second.
We get a lot of work out of that truck, I'm sure, knowing what, all the utility work being done. Some of you may have even noticed there's been some work done on Lexington Avenue. For a long time, there was a drain there that was not really taking stormwater away effectively. So I appreciate that our utilities department stepped up, and although it's caused a little bit of an inconvenience for people driving that direction, it ultimately will mean we'll see a reduction in water standing on the streets. So appreciate that.
So is this for a whole new truck?
No, it's the.
Or is it just the camera?
It's the camera system on the truck.
That is expensive.
The truck itself, it is expensive, Commissioner.
Is it 4D or 4, whatever it is, 4G or what's the? What's the?
I don't know. It ought to be 24 karat gold.
I'm showing my age at starting.
The truck is actually a low-mileage truck, but the camera, it is expensive. That technology is really critical to utilities being able to find and wastewater collection being able to find some of the challenges that they have.
And this goes back to our point of reinvesting in specifically, I think our sewer system is going to need that camera specifically, because we're finding a lot of needs there. We've addressed water lines, but now we're going after sewer lines, so I think it's a good purchase.
Any timetable on when the Lexington Avenue, when that project is?
Commissioner, we expect the, so as the mayor mentioned, the Lexington Avenue is open to traffic. Now the connections on those new storm drains are going to be done on Rogers and Winslow? Is that the name of the other court?
Windsor Court.
Windsor Court. So what the streets department is doing is they're trying to limit the impact on the citizens that live on those courts, and they're doing one of the connectors to the line at a time. Is that correct, Mr. Hunter? So probably about two weeks. They've had their eyes focused on the start of school, and that's been their goal, to knock this out before the school year begins, and having Lexington open is a big victory. And again, Jack, thanks to you and your guys, a lot of skill doing that. I know it's been something, as the mayor said, it's been out there for many years. It's been a hassle for the folks that live there, so great job.
Yeah, I had, one of the residents of that, longstanding residents of that street reached out to me yesterday and thanked the city for taking care of it, so it's.
It's great.
I was worried.
We'll get it done before that Dollar General opens up. Be about like a ribbon cutting at five and below. They're out the door.
All right. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ash and Mountain Enterprises, Inc. for the placement and replacement of by two minutes asphalt material for fiscal year 2022, street paving program in the amount not to exceed $1,990,000 for the City of Ashland Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Any discussion? Just want to say, this is back to our bond on quality of life and taking care of things. This is going to be for streets repaving, which is critical. And we get a lot of concerned citizens that reach out to us about certain streets, and this is going to be our efforts to remedy some of that. And I'm sure Jack and the streets department is appreciative of the extra funds to get some of this done, for sure.
You know, we talked before about paving, keep paving over things to our sewer grids, grates are so low that it tears the wheel off your car.
Right.
So city manager, I think I talked to you about that, too. We talked about the kind of, what do they call that when they take it down to the bed before, are they?
Right. Thanks, Commissioner, for that opportunity. In the past, the city has been inconsistent on, now I just forgot the term.
Yeah, what is that called?
Grinding it down.
Take it down.
Milling it.
Milling, okay.
Yeah. The city's been inconsistent on that. A lot of complaints on, specifically on Blackburn, as you know, that wasn't our paving job. That will jar your teeth. And the city utilities department has worked on raising those. And I say to everybody in the community, if you see those and you think we see them and missed them, let us know, and utilities will correct those. But we do make that part of the contracts now, that raising those is part of the job. I will say, and I'd have to double-check with Chris, or Steve's out of town right now, but if they don't physically do it as part of the job, they'll coordinate with our staff to do that simultaneously.
So you can actually raise the grid up to, oh.
So you can go one of two ways. There's a lot of different devices to do that, Commissioner.
Sounds good.
But it's definitely been a great observation from our citizens, and, you know, you put layer after layer, you've got to address that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Before you move forward, I just want to make clarification that due to a potential conflict of interest for myself on item K on the consent agenda, that I do want to make sure that it's noted that my, it's recorded as an abstention from the vote for the consent agenda. Okay?
Very good. Item C, reading and adoption of a resolution entitled, a resolution the City of Ash, Kentucky, designating Greg Ray, Fire Chief, as the city's designate to represent the city with Guard Fire Department-related Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA projects.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ash, Kentucky and Bell Engineering for engineering services for design of Johnson Fork, Baggage Avenue and Florida Street Water Booster Station repairs project for the Department of Engineering in an amount not to exceed $83,500.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Again, this is from our bond proceeds to further repairing our utilities. All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, adopting the job description for the position of Housing Administrative Assistant, adopting the job description for the position of Section 8 Voucher Administrator as a replacement for the position of Section 8 Voucher Grants Coordinator, adopting the job description for the position of Programming Grant Administrator as a replacement for the position of the Project and Grant Specialist in the Department of Community and Economic Development, adopting the revised job description for the position of Customer Service Representative in the Department of Finance, adding two additional maintenance workers, one, two, or three, to the Department of Public Services Division of Streets, adding two additional police officers to the Department of Police Division Patrol, and adopting the amended authorization positions list of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I just want to say, this, again, this specifically is proof that we support our law enforcement efforts. We're strengthening our law enforcement efforts to tackle some of the issues in our community by adding these police officer positions to the city. And I look forward to them being able to, all the work, the hard work that we need them to do to help fight some of the things that we're fighting right now. Any other discussion?
When I look at, you know, the positions, obviously, are, you know, for me, absolutely justified. We, you go through these, check them off, you know, understand the justification. So, and then I think of it from an administration standpoint, and, you know, it's, there's a lot of administrative work that comes with new positions. So it's, I think it's important to remember that and think about our HR group who does a good job. And there's, it's not just, okay, we need these positions, bring them on. There's recruiting. There's, you know, a couple of these positions, we'll, you know, and that's something I'm sure we'll need to look at, is recruiting for a couple of these positions. But there's a lot of extra work that our city staff does, and they do a really good job. It's not just, you know, saying that you can hire someone is just the first part of the battle, usually, especially right now, it's a tough.
Yeah, Chief Kelly and I actually talked about this, too. You know, there's, because of the pandemic, there's a backlog of people getting through the academy. And because of that, it ends up putting a damper on us seeing boots on the ground immediately. So to the Commissioner's point, I totally, we totally need to be realistic here. It is going to be difficult. Law enforcement, recruiting across the nation is difficult right now. So yes, we will have to be patient, I'm sure, before those positions potentially are filled.
Mayor, if I can add?
Go ahead.
Just to add one thing, I think the APD has done a spectacular job. They are advertising for certified police officers. So as you all know, a couple of years ago, a lot of cities were getting cherry-picked from with bigger salaries, and there was, if somebody got plucked before the three-year commitment to the original city, the gaining city had to pay back a portion to the city that lost. And so Chief and his senior staff have made a concerted effort to go after certified police officers, and so far, we're showing some really good initial feedback on that. So we hope that continues to go that way. To your point, you don't lose them to the academy then. You know, we've got to stay away from folks that are, you know, under three years, of course, but that also gives us more experience. I think the benefits and what you all have done for the paying benefits for not all, not just all the city workers, but for APD is also significant as part of that conversation as we try to attract people. What I'm trying to say is I think we've got a great benefits plan and great play that is very attractive to other people that want to come to this community, not just for the job, but all the other things that we've mentioned today.
Commissioner?
I think we're all proud of our police force and the job they do here. But I was a little startled when I read on here how much it actually costs for us to administer pass-through money, like CDGB funds, HUD housing funds, and things like that. I mean, this costs the city taxpayer a lot of money.
It's, and to correct me if I'm wrong, some of this, the administration portion of this salary is potentially paid for through federal funds. Is that correct?
Is that right, Chris? Okay. Do you have a breakdown on any, I mean, this is a lot of, like, 500, do we get a grant for $561,000?
So with the Section 8 program and the CDBG program, there are administrative costs built into those grants.
Okay.
The city can use to pay salaries for those positions.
Is it a partial payment for the salary, not the full amount?
It's usually the full amount minus a couple of percentage points, because we also have to track every minute we spend in these programs. So if, for instance, if we have a CDBG project manager also, you know, does a few other things for the city, we can't charge those other activities off to CDBG.
I see.
We can only charge off what they do.
Time on that project.
What you can say is that the CDBG activities are charged to CDBG activities. Those employees doing other things, those can be charged off to either Section 8 or their own.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And due to the administrator for Section 8 being on this part of the ordinance, I'm going to abstain.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Tennis Technology, Inc. in the amount of $47,000 for the resurfers of all existing tennis courts and pickleball courts, and converting one tennis court into four pickleball courts in Central Park for the Department of Public Services Division of Parks.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ash, Kentucky and HDR Engineering, Inc. for engineering services for design of the 13th Street Tank Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $142,300 for the Department of Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to clarify, these are not paid for with local tax dollars. This is a part of that ARPA money, which is a pass-through for the federal government, so it's not out of our pocket, which is always great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item H, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number six between the City of Ash, Kentucky and Orders Construction Company, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $25,406 for a contract for the construction of the Ashland Water Treatment Plant Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, SCADA, for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item I, mayor requests the Board of Commissioners concurrence for the appointment of Derek Runyon to the Ashland Park Board to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Jeviden, expiring October 18, 2021, and the reappointment of Derek Runyon for the term of October 18, 2021 to October 18, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think this is a great addition to our park board. Derek Runyon is a quality individual, former principal at Blazer. Now he's with the administration, and he has two young boys, and one of them plays on Little League fields as we know it, and he'd be a great addition.
And no one can fill Dr. Jeviden's shoes, make no mistake, but Derek has proven himself to be a concerned citizen who cares about this community and cares about our park system. So I think it was fitting that he be appointed.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to review and discuss records exempt from disclosure under the Home Land Security Exemption KRS 61-878 subsection 1M, and to discuss an individual personnel matter.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to go into executive session. Thank you all.
Second.
Entertained a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion adjourned.
Amen.
Alright.